Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June 9th, 2020. I'm Heather Peffley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's June 9th, 2020 Work Session being conducted remotely, where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall Council Chambers will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels 189 and 190, and also available at manistetv.org. There will be no video associated with this meeting. The microphones of all members of the City Council, the City Manager, and the City Clerk will always be live unless there is an audio disruption. I will now begin to unmute and check each microphone that will be live during the meeting. Good evening. Councilmember Cooper, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Heather.
Good evening. Councilmember Beaton, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor Zelinski, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Heather.
Good evening, Councilmember Sipsick, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Grabowski, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good evening, Councilmember Martin Pontiac, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Taylor, can you hear me?
Yes.
As a reminder, councilmembers, please clearly state your name before speaking and mute your device when you are not speaking. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. We'll call the meeting to order on work session items. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on work session-related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It is very important that those giving comments have good phone connection and no sound or noise whatsoever in the background. Like televisions and all forms of audio should be muted. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issues cannot be corrected by the caller, we will move on to the next person in line. We'll now take public comments. For those of you that don't have an agenda, tonight we'll be talking, discussing short-term rentals, refuge, totes on River Street, naming the baseball field at Reeds Park. The City Clerk will now take over and check with the comments for the work-related items.
Good evening. Telephone number ending in 6739, do you have a comment or would you like to pass?
No, thank you.
Telephone number 8081, do you have a comment or would you like to pass?
I have a comment.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Dan Duchan, 410 12th Street, Manistee, Michigan.
Go ahead.
Okay, I want to thank the mayor and also Jim Grabowski for acting on this so quickly. And what a number of us guys that grew up here all our lives and have witnessed the work that Phil Clyver has done for the Manistee Saints, in particular, on the baseball diamond at Reeds Park. And the city does a wonderful job taking care of Reeds Park. But for the last 50 years that Phil has been, Mr. Clyver has been involved with Saints baseball. He's been quite the ambassador for the city in the past and the present and probably in the future. And they take care of all the maintenance and everything else. And I realize that through the years, Hamlin Field, Judge Hamlin donated that to the Klonians and Sands Park and so forth from, and Mr. Reeds, probably 150 years ago or whatever. And you can't change the name of the park, but Reeds Park is well taken care of by the city. And Phil has been the spearhead for at least the last almost 50 years with the Saints. And he has managed them for decades, does this totally voluntarily, has no idea I'm even bringing this up. I haven't talked to him about this. Just a number of us that have witnessed all the good he's done through the years. And he's been a tremendous ambassador, I feel, for the City of Manistee in leading this charge. You know, a lot of people do things and volunteer and a lot of people do it and get paid for it. And Phil's not getting paid. I mean, this is just total, total dedication and consistency. And if there was such a thing as a Manistee Hall of Fame, he would definitely qualify because he's done it for years. And I really appreciate the City Council and Jim for bringing this up. And I know Dale's been here all his life, as Jim has, and our City Attorney mostly is. And I just, you know, you guys have probably seen a lot of what's going on. So I really appreciate you folks for hearing what our idea is. Basically, what we'd like to do is the baseball field only, not the park by any means, but do something to honor Phil Clyver. I guess that sums it up. I don't know what else.
Thank you. Mayor, those are the only two members of the public joining us this evening.
Thank you, Heather. First up, discussions on short-term rentals. Mr. Shemansky.
Mr. Shemansky is not with us this evening. He has not called in yet.
Oh, okay. Is there anybody who would like to talk about short-term rentals on the council tonight?
Sure. Why don't we go ahead and at least...
I'm sorry? I didn't hear that.
This is Beaton. I think we should go ahead and do that.
Do you have some comments?
Yes, I've been paying attention to the discussions on the Planning Commission. And they still would like further direction from the City Council on where to go with this. Now, all of the documentation that I have seen points to the majority of the short-term rentals occur in the North Side, basically in Harbor Village. And I believe I have made this comment before, but if I didn't, I'd be remiss. But one of the great things about Harbor Village is there's one management company that handles everything for Harbor Village, including their rentals of the units. Jermaine can probably tip in on this too. And I think it would be advantageous if they got in touch with Schmidt Rogers up in Traverse City and found out what all of the rental arrangements are for each of the associations. They may all be the same. There may be something in them that needs to be more specific. I know we've had some residents come forward and a couple other previous council members who have been upset, especially on Charter Court, about people, in their estimation, maybe abusing the privilege by having a lot more people in the units renting it for the weekend or whatever and multiple cars parked. That's been a problem. So that's where I would suggest we start. And I don't know if anybody has picked up the phone to call them. I was hoping that maybe we could convince Mike at the Planning Department to maybe do that on our behalf, to pull that information together. That's my comment.
Is there anyone else who'd like to weigh in?
Okay, this is Grabowski. Remember here a while back, Spicer's came up and talked about the rental program, told about how many on the North and South Side of rentals are already going. We were surprised because there was quite a few that we didn't know about. And so they kind of went back and forth too. But I've got a paper in front of me that Traverse City is worried about since the COVID-19 problem up there. They're worried about a lot of the rentals, if they can get money back this year because of all the problems with the COVID. So they're kind of up in the air up there too. They're discussing what to do with the short-term or long-term rentals. Thank you.
Anybody else?
This is Rob Carson, County Planning Director. The only concern I have with, well, I have a couple concerns. But with the proposition of speaking to the management company strictly for Harbor Village, that won't capture all of the short-term rentals within the city. And if the city's looking to regulate short-term rentals, it should probably be explored in all districts within the boundaries of the city rather than just within planning development. And then I think we need to have clarification on exactly what type of program City Council is looking to have exist. I know we need some information from the rental company, but is this something that would be a standalone rental ordinance? And then who would administer that ordinance? And that's, but I can answer questions if anybody has any.
Rob, I have a question. Are you there?
Yes, yep, certainly.
What is the objective of this, having this ordinance? What would be the objective?
Well, from the concerns that we've heard directly conveyed to us, you just have some members of the community that want to have some sort of regulation in place can make, I guess, the owners of short-term rentals, not really the owners, I guess, but those who are utilizing them accountable. If there were to be, you know, excessive guests at a home or a condo that is, you know, only really appropriately sized for, you know, a single family, that brings in with it, you know, infrastructure pressure. If you have, you know, 10 people utilizing a home that was cited based on a single family. Other than that, we, all of our discussion has just been through Planning Commission members and obviously what's been conveyed to us from Mick from the council.
Excuse me, Mayor, I just want to let you know that Councilmember Shemansky is with us now.
Good. Thank you, Rob. Mr. Shemansky, do you have some comments?
Well, you know, I think one of the things that happened was during the, when we first started the pandemic, we wanted to make sure that we didn't have short-term rental people allowing people to come up from downstate and kind of clog our medical system. And basically, we had no way of controlling it at all because we had no ordinance. We had no control at all, so we were just kind of handicapped. And again, and the other issue is that without having any kind of ordinance, you know, we really kind of fall into a difficult situation where, you know, you can have a city that doesn't have enough rental spaces for the people that work here. You know, we have people buying only for vacation rentals and there's really nothing for people to actually live that want to live and work and be part of our community. So I think those are a couple of reasons why we want to have an ordinance. And again, it's just another way, you know, I think we owe it to people who come to Manistee and rent that we have some control over what kind of facility they're going to be getting once they get here. You know, we, right now, there's no health regulations. There's, you know, we don't know if they have the proper safety environments. In other words, do they have smoke detectors, you know? Are they clean and sanitary? All those kind of things are just part of what we have. They're basically an unregulated element. You know, we regulate our hotels and motels. We regulate our long-term rentals, but we've done nothing with our short-term vacation rentals.
This is Beaton. I agree with them, yes. My biggest concern is public safety and that people who are renting anything up here should have some comfort in knowing that an inspector has inspected the home or the condo or whatever for safety. I want them all to be registered in our rental program properly. And I don't know how to capture all of them. Airbnb comes to mind and a few others. But, you know, I think it's, I don't think we can have a robust resort feel to our community without giving the people that are visiting some sort of assurance that it's a safe place for them to stay. So that's one of my pet peeves about rentals in general in the City of Manistee.
Mayor, this is Thad. Can I make a comment?
Sure you can.
I would point out that short-term rentals are required to participate and register in our rental registration and inspection program. The difficulty that we have is that we can't, we can't with any certainty identify all the short-term rentals. But those that we know of are part of the rental inspection program.
Mr. Taylor, with all due respect, this is Beaton. I know that because I know a couple of them that are Airbnbs and they are in the rental program. But you're right, it's hard to capture them all. That is a problem.
Right, yeah. But those ones, and we've had this discussion with Spicer, and the ones that they know of and have discovered are in the program. It's just those that are flying under the radar that we can't identify.
Mr. Taylor, for those that are flying under the radar and get caught flying under the radar, is there any penalties for that?
I don't have that answer right now.
Is there anybody else? Would it be acceptable to council to have staff work on a draft rental agreement based on what they've heard tonight? Is there any objection to that?
Would we be looking at a classified ordinance? Or are we looking at something under zoning?
Mayor, I can answer that.
Sure.
Yeah, in discussions with the City Attorney, he said it can be done through the zoning ordinance.
This is Rob Carson here. The only concern I have with that is you're placing enforcement on a largely weekend use of a property on staff that are only available Monday through Friday. So if there is complaints against the program, there won't be inspections conducted until after 8:30 a.m. Monday morning.
Is there any objection with it being a classified ordinance like some of the other communities in our area?
Mayor, this is Thad again. I think I would leave that decision up to the City Attorney. My discussion with him is that the enforcement certainly can be done through the zoning ordinance. And we have the ability to designate a zoning administrator that has that enforcement powers, and they can in turn delegate that. And we're working on that process to delegate portions of the zoning ordinance enforcement through the Police Department.
Okay, that makes good sense.
Right.
Would it be acceptable to council to have staff move forward and come and get back with us on something?
I have a quick question. This is Jermaine. If we're just worried about the long-term rentals, like worried about, you know, them overbooking, like too many people in a, in one space and the parking and stuff like that, since it's already regulated and they're, you know, going in and making sure that there's smoke detectors and it's clean and sanitary, then why can't we just draft something up to where they can't, they can only have so many people in a house instead of, you know, blanketing this with long-term and short-term rentals? Because, I mean, there's long-term rentals that are not sanitary and nobody should be living in them, but yet we want to charge these people that have condos that are bringing people to the city and spending money. That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, that was one of my concerns when I asked the question of what we're trying to accomplish was that are we doing this just to gather, to create revenue for the city? Or are we doing it to solve a problem? I'm not sure. We've had many problems. Mr. Taylor, maybe you can answer that.
Well, I periodically check with the Police Department, and they have not expressed any concern with issues that come from short-term rentals in terms of, you know, loud noise or parking or things like that. They just have not identified it as a problem.
This is Beaton again, but we did have two people from Charter Court come forward and give public comment about the rent, the short-term rentals in Harbor Village. So I'm not going to ignore that. But I do kind of, I understand what Jermaine's saying because, yeah, you do get rental properties throughout the city that have extra people in them. And somehow we do have to regulate that, and I don't know how to do that, but I think it brings up a good point that maybe there's... And I know at the Planning Commission meetings, we talked about having it in different rules for different areas of the city. And I'm not sure where to go with that either. So I think it's worthy for us to keep talking about it tonight to see how other council members feel about that since we all represent different areas of the city.
This is Jermaine again. So you had two people complain from Charter Court. How many people have complained about the long-term rentals in the city and have, like, begged for them to be cleaned up in the blight? Like, you can't just turn a blind eye to that because you have a new project going with the long, or the short-term rentals? Like, it doesn't make sense to drive out people and make it hard for them to rent to short-term people that are coming here to vacation. And then you have garbage sitting on the other side of town that you're just turning a blind eye to because you don't know what to do with. Like, if you're going to crack down on one, you need to crack down on both and, you know, not to say, okay, well, you've got too many cars parked at this rental. Okay, well, across the town in Mackeltown, you have 15 cars sitting in one yard, and everybody drives by that. Like, you can't do that.
This is Beaton. I agree with you. I think that's an extremely valid point. And, you know, there could be a difference between, you know, condos and residential areas within the city. I'm really discouraged when I drive around too and I see some of these dilapidated, dilated properties that people are renting. So, yeah, and I don't know what the answer is. I really don't. We need to look at it, and so we need to keep talking about it tonight.
I think the answer is you need to stop making ordinances for things that work and try to fix the things that aren't working. Like, it almost feels like, and I know that I'll probably get backlash for this, but it almost feels like this town is divided into two sections. It's downtown, the water, the condos, and then you've got Mackeltown and the other areas. But, I mean, even Mark from the DDA said last week, he never went to any of these businesses. He mailed out a fire. Like, you can't, if you're going to clean up the city, you need to do it as a whole and not do it in sections and start another project when you hadn't finished the other one. I've been on council for eight months. We talked about blight twice, and then it's just been away. So we're going to, like, just ignore it until winter time till everything is snowed over and brings back in the spring? I mean, it just makes no sense to me that you just keep starting projects and starting projects without finishing anything.
This is Mick Shemansky.
Go ahead, Mr. Shemansky.
You know, again, the other issue with short-term rentals is that it does take away from the opportunity for people to find decent rental properties in Manistee. You have people who basically are buying properties. They rent it for a few weeks in the summertime, and then it's mothballed the rest of the year. And they're taking those properties away from people to rent, which then brings people to the point where the only thing that's available to them are some of the blighted properties that Jermaine had mentioned. And I agree with you wholeheartedly, Jermaine. We do need to have some muscle behind some of our existing ordinance, especially when it comes to the condition of property. We have way too many properties in town that are below par. And below par, I'm being kind. But I do think we need to address the fact that we have absolutely nothing on the books that addresses short-term rentals, nothing. So anytime we get to any kind of an issue about it, there's, we basically, you know, when I brought this up to Mr. Taylor because, you know, we had other cities that were basically saying that we wanted short-term rentals to cease and desist during the beginning of the pandemic, Mr. Taylor basically told me that, that he was told by the City Attorney that because we have no ordinance, there is nothing this city can do, nothing. So it's just not the way we want to run our community. We want to have at least some control over a viable part of our business. And again, we want to make sure also that we're not just turning ourselves into a vacation rental facility where somebody who wants to live and work here can't find a place to rent.
So, Mr. Shemansky, what's the bottom line? What are you looking for in an ordinance?
Again, something very reasonable. There was a couple of examples that we discussed at the Planning Commission that were not extreme. They basically said, you know, that they needed to be registered. They needed to pass, you know, a basic rental inspection before they could go into business. And that's really all I'm looking for, is something where we have some kind of a handle on a, in some cases, a very lucrative business operation, but also something that could, you know, again, detract from our community as far as growing and our ability to be able to provide decent rentals for people who want to live here.
Councilmember Sipsick, do you have any comments or any, what would you like to see? What would you like to see happen?
I completely agree that there needs to be some sort of ordinance to get a handle on the rentals. I mean, a lot of the rentals that I see are not, like, people that are looking for long-term rentals, those are not affordable to them, like the condos and stuff, because these people have to adjust the rent to, you know, pay either their mortgage or the taxes or the dues or whatever. So I agree with that. I just, I'm just tired of starting another project and everything else is, you know, we'll get to that in eight to 10 months again when somebody brings it up.
So I think I hear you saying that if we come up with an ordinance, it should include not only short-term rentals, but all rentals. Is that what I hear you saying?
Yes, yes, inspections. They need inspections. They need, if, you know, we put something in there to where if you're renting a house, you can't have more than two cars, you know, outside or in a parking spot. You can't have 15 cars, you know, taking up other residents' parking spots, like stuff like that. But if you're going to do that, you need to do it for the whole rental community, not just short-term rentals.
Okay, so... Okay, so any other council members have any other comments?
Yes, this is Grabuski. I've got the Spicer rental inspection program in front of me where they go in, but I don't know if it's, there's not an ordinance that tells them, but the people are supposed to report when they go in and rent the place and then Spicer's are supposed to investigate. Uh, I'm on the ordinance committee and I've asked, and I think you are too, Mr. Shemansky, and so is Mr. Cooper. And I've asked time and again about having meetings on the ordinance committee and I was told when we need you, we'll call you. Not too long ago, somebody expressed that they were doing the investigation with the planning commission and all that. And I feel what's going on here, I'm on the ordinance committee and nobody tells us about it. So I think we need an ordinance. We need to put some teeth into it. And I agree with Ms. Sipic that, you know, this, this thing has got to get off the ground.
Well, this is Beaton. I have a suggestion. I think I've seen in some other communities where if you're going to buy investment property for renting, first of all, it has to be brought up to standards and that includes blight standards. Secondly, some of them even include you can't use it as a rental property for short-term rentals for two years, up to two years after you purchase it. So that may be a little steep for us here as far as the two years go, but I would certainly think that buying properties in the city and bringing them up to an acceptable level of a, of, you know, which eliminates the blight, it should be part of an ordinance somehow.
But I think we got to start someplace and we got to start writing that ordinance.
Well, yeah, that's why, yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we want staff to start working on something? Does any council member have objections to that?
I have no objections with, with staff and, and again, staff working with the zoning, is, is probably a, a good, good beginning point.
But that's Mr. Taylor, go ahead, I'm sorry. You broke up, Jim.
Okay, like I said, okay, the zoning committee, but what about the ordinance committee?
Mr. Taylor?
I would suggest, it seems like a lot of this discussion came out of the planning commission. And it would seem like it would be a good idea to put it back to them because it is a zone, you know, a lot of it, or some of it is zoning related and planning. I would suggest that maybe they work on that, on some ideas and flesh out an ordinance for council to review.
Mr. Shemansky, you're, you're on the planning commission. Do you have enough information to be helpful on the planning commission?
Well, you know, again, the planning, the planning commission has been working on this for quite some time. The, the concern with the planning commission is they wanted to make sure they weren't just spinning their wheels, that there was actually a desire from city council to have this. So I, I think that's really what, what the planning commission is looking for is that, yes, we do want to have an ordinance. And then, you know, we could, we could come up with, you know, a couple of models and then have that actually be reviewed by the ordinance committee to determine whether or not it's, it meets the, the criteria of the, of the community and does it make more sense for it to be under zoning or to be a codified ordinance, which other communities have done as well. And, and I think that's what Mr. Grabuski was talking about. If it would be a codified ordinance, then it would be part of the ordinance committee to work on and develop.
Does anybody have any objections to moving in that direction?
Well, no, I don't have, this is Beaton, I don't have any objections, but I, I guess I want to hear from Jermaine. We need to adjust the blight problem for the rentals that we have in town. So how can we incorporate that issue into this?
Well, Mr. Taylor, maybe you can help. I think those are two different issues. Am I right or wrong there?
They are two different issues and I, what I was going to suggest is Detective Sergeant Glass has started a new, you know, blight program, picking up from when Tim Kozel was here. And he's reporting that he's had, the officers have had very good success. I'll ask him to report out to council on, and just let them know exactly how that is working in terms of operationally and any success we have. And I'll ask him to, to at least give an update at the next council meeting.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, we are supporting the planning commission and their efforts to come up with an ordinance for, or a zoning ordinance for short-term rentals. Is that correct? Do I hear any negativity there?
I hope that's a good idea.
Mr. Taylor, are you all set with that?
Yeah, what I'm hearing is that the, the, the planning commission just wants the assurance that the council has a desire for a short-term rental ordinance so they can continue their work.
And I think that's what I'm hearing, if I'm all please correct me.
That's right. I, I agree, although I, I think Jermaine had, had suggested that we also tie it in and if it's possible, tie it into rentals in general, long and short-term. Jermaine, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, that's correct because I feel that if you, if, if we start with the, the short-term rentals, we're just going to forget about the long-term rentals and it's still going to be exactly the same. Like if you're going to put an ordinance together for the short-term rentals that a single-family dwelling can only have two cars while they're there, then that should apply to the long-term rentals as well. Because as you can see, all over the, all over the place, they've got four or five cars, three cars in the back. I mean, I, I think that you can tie in the long-term and the short-term together. And there's no point in making these rules for a short-term and in giving, you know, the inspector having to, you know, inspect short-term rentals on top of long-term rentals when they can't even keep up with that. I mean, some of these places that these people are living in is ridiculous. It needs to be cleaned up. Like I, I can't express that anymore. It's ridiculous.
Mr. Shemansky?
Yes, sir.
Well, how do you, what do you, what do you think the planning commission needs to move forward or have reassurance that council is in support of what they're doing?
Well, yeah, I think that's, that's really what, what Rob was looking for. Something, you know, that basically said, you know, this is what we would like the planning commission to work on specifically. Uh, maybe something from, uh, at the end of this meeting to have Mr. Taylor or somebody from the staff compose something to the planning commission saying, you know, yes, based on the city council, we would like you to work on this and include, uh, long-term rentals to, to be, um, you know, the general principles to apply to both long and short-term rentals.
Um, this is Rob Carson. If I can say something. Um, a memo would be fine. We could also, um, council could just make a motion and have it recorded in the minutes and then we always have something to go back to and we can just turn to the minutes then rather than having to have a memo. If we
We can do it.
Yeah, this is a planning
That's fine, but you have a, you have a council meeting coming up though. And so you could make it formal at the council meeting. Just in my past experience, when tasks were relayed to a planning commission, they were typically made at a motion level at a council or a county board meeting. And then the planning commission picked that up and ran with it from that point. And we always have something to turn to if members of the public, members of the business community question the motives of staff. Because that, I'll be quite honest with you, that's what's occurring. Um, and so we just want to make sure that we have the support of the elected body as well as the appointed body as we move forward with these tasks.
Anybody have any objections to that? No. Mr. Taylor, can you make that happen?
Um, I'll, I'll see if we can, if we can get it, get on the agenda. If not, we can make it an addition to the agenda on Tuesday evening. That's, that'd be the worst-case scenario.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on this subject? Hearing none, we'll move on to the discussion of refuse totes on River Street. Mr. Shemansky, you're up again.
Okay, again, I apologize for being late. Um, the, the, a number of people from River Street, and, and I'm not sure if they've contacted other council members, but I've had a number of businesses who basically, for one reason or another, really were not part of the DDA, uh, decision to basically move the, the garbage into the dumpsters. And, and honestly, I am all for it. I, I think it makes sense. But they did come up with some very good points. A, a lot of the businesses would like to continue with having the totes for, for a couple of reasons. First is that they're, they're not close to any of the dumpsters. Uh, you know, they're maybe a couple of blocks away. So for them, garbage is going to have to be trucked up to those dumpsters every night or, or in a reasonable interval to be able to get them to those dumpsters. The second is that in the wintertime, uh, for a lot of them, getting your, your garbage up to those is going to be a challenge. Uh, you know, a couple of the streets going up from River Street up to those dumpsters are, are pretty treacherous. Uh, you know, they're ice-covered, they're, they're slippery, they're not necessarily plowed the same way as River Street is. And, and I can just imagine trying to drag a couple of bags of garbage, you know, a block or two up a slippery slope, um, to try to get them to the appropriate place. So my suggestion is that we give the downtown merchants the option of the totes, just like we have for our community members. I would not include the, using the bags because that was part of the problem that we had is that the bags and the boxes would break apart and then we had garbage flying all over River Street. But if they were in the totes, uh, I think collecting is fairly easy for the, the, uh, collection agency. And it gives us, like I said, another option for our downtown merchants not having to necessarily haul garbage up and around to get it to those dumpsters.
Any other comments from council?
Uh, this is Beaton. I have a comment. One of the things that concerns me about River Street and in the DDA portion of the city is that we have over 100 people who are renters in that district. We, and, and we were supposed to have a citizens committee made up of nine members of those people. And I don't think we've ever filled that, completed, you know, having people appointed that because nobody's applying. Here's my dilemma, here's my concern. These people are used to putting their garbage on the street, on the street, and now they got to haul it to a dumpster behind there. Um, I, I, I'm not really sure it's equitable for them. Uh, but I haven't really heard much either. So I have some concerns that we're going to still see garbage on the streets and back. Um, I don't know what the answer is. But, um, I think I probably, in, in some way, I kind of agree with you, Mick, because there's going to be residents that maybe they share a tote or maybe they have in the past. I'm not really sure how that works with all of these renters. So it's, it's hard to guess what they need to when you don't get enough information coming forward.
Mayor, this is Thad. Can I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
The, the, the issue of the trash on River Street was discussed by the Ad-Hoc Committee on, on Refuse. That was one of the recommendations. Um, there was representation from the DDA. And the decision was to have the DDA build those dump, two dumpster enclosures and then require those businesses or residential units that couldn't locate a dumpster on their property, they would be required to take them to those, one of those two dumpster locations. And there was discussions about, um, you know, that it might be a difficulty in transporting refuse to those. And so, uh, we're looking at buying one, if not two trailers, uh, that would be secured next to the dumpsters, would have a combination lock. They would be available for anyone that is required to use those dumpsters to get and haul their trash that way. Um, and specifically about that citizens, citizen, citizens committee, we were required by statute to try to put together a citizens commu, uh, committee to review the DDA TIF plan. And we could only get two. So there wasn't a requirement that there be established a citizens committee to review anything beyond the TIF, uh, TIF propose, proposal.
So, so is there, is there any, any major issues involved with allowing the, the citizens and/or the businesses to rent the totes from Republic and have them collected on River Street?
Well, again, this is Thad. Um, the, the big issue is that, you know, council is already, you know, there was that report out from the, the Ad-Hoc Refuge Committee and giving staff a direction to pursue. And we're already down that road. Um, we've already let bids out for the dumpster enclosures. Um, they're going to be starting construction very soon. Um, and the, the recommendation was no trash on River Street in the DDA district. And so now we, we would be then going backwards.
Mayor, this is Jeff McCullough. Can I add something to that?
Sure.
The, um, when we went through, or when the Ad-Hoc Refuge Committee went through that, that was actually the first option that they looked at was just making totes exclusive in the downtown. And what many of the businesses came forward on their own during that discussion. And there's quite a few that do not have any room on their property to, to put a tote. So, um, we went through with Republic and we did kind of an audit of the downtown and we went building by building, looked at whether they had second-story apartments or the ability to have them, looked at if they had rear access to their buildings. And really, the topography is one of the challenging issues because on the south side, you've got higher ground that busts right up to the buildings. On the north side, you've got, um, some access behind the buildings, but Republic can't get to them during the, the wintertime because of the steep slopes. And a lot of those building owners said even, on the north side, said even though we can get a cart back, back there, we don't want to lug it up the hill every day. Um, so that's what kind of prompted us to move to the corrals where it would be accessible, equally accessible to everybody in that portion of the DDA district. Um, as Thad mentioned that we, um, Thad mentioned the trailers. We actually ordered two trailers today. So those will be available for anybody in the DDA district to be able to unlock them and use them as necessary. And then the other thing that Republic mentioned is because these are centralized collections, we've sized the dumpster locations and the number of dumpsters as well as the number of times during the week that they're emptied to meet what the current demand of the downtown is. And if they had to do another collection run down River Street, that would add, uh, substantial collection cost to this and add to the, uh, the special rates that downtown would pay throughout.
Any other comments?
Yeah, my only-
Go ahead.
This is Mick Samansky. My only other, only comment is that, you know, again, we don't necessarily always have to look at one solution. And I don't know that when we discussed the, and I'm not opposed to the dumpsters. I think it is probably the more appropriate way of dealing with, you know, the majority of the trash. But again, I don't know how it would be that much more expensive to bring a truck once a week down River Street picking up only the containers, you know, again, on an automated process like we're trying to move the rest of the city to. So, my idea is just not to have a one-size-fits-all solution to the downtown, but be able to look at, you know, some options for smaller businesses and, you know, businesses that find it difficult to be able to use the dumpsters.
Any comments, Mr. Taylor?
Well, it certainly would add costs. Even though it's automated, they're gonna have a set fee to come down to do those. And we're still gonna be paying for emptying those dumpsters in the corrals. And also, it goes against what the intent was, was to make sure there were no, there wasn't any trash on River Street in the DDA District in order to increase the appearance of that area. And, you know, I'm comfortable it was, it was fully discussed in, at the, through the Ad-Hoc Committee and a number of options were brought up and some were acted on, some were discarded. And the considered opinion of the Ad-Hoc Committee was, the best option was, for those businesses and tenants in upper-floor apartments that couldn't have a dumpster on their property, that they would be directed to the dumpsters in the corral. So, you know, we're already going down that path. We've already spent quite a bit of money to get there. And now, if we go to totes, go back to totes, for some, we've just added an additional expense.
Council members, what direction do you wanna go?
I feel that we leave the program as it is now with the totes and the places that they had our committee discuss. I was on that committee. So, that was the best we could do because of, we didn't wanna take and have all these individual totes because the people didn't have any place to put them. So, this is the best situation right now.
Anybody else? What's your action?
Martin Pontiac, I would agree. I think that we should just leave it as is.
Anybody else wish to weigh in? I'm, okay, I'm not hearing anything. It's, anybody have any objections to leaving it the way it is? If there's no further discussion, then we'll move on to the next item. The next item is naming the baseball field at Reitz Park.
Yeah.
Mr. Gobowski, you want to take the lead on that?
Yes, as Dan Duchan discussed, he wants to know if we'd named the field, not the park, but just the field after Mr. Kleiber because of his service and taking care of the field and managing the team for 50 years. And he just felt that would be an honor and manacy has always helped Reitz Park and gave him money. And so, he'd like to just see the field named after Mr. Kleiber, if the council would agree.
This is Councilman Cooper and I agree 100%.
This is Councilman Beaton, I also agree.
Anybody else?
Mayor, this is Stan, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I'm not opposed to the concept whatsoever. I'm just wondering if it would be good form to reach, to see if there's any descendants of the Reitz family that we can contact and, just as a courtesy, let them know what we're doing and see how they feel about it. I'm just wondering if that would be good form.
This is Gobowski, I think that'd be a good idea, Stan.
Anybody else have any, any objections to that?
No, I think that makes sense.
This is Beaton, I think Phil's done a tremendous job. I admire him greatly. But I, you know, in defense of the Saints, I know they would like to see some other volunteers step up and help with the maintenance, the groundskeeping responsibilities of the ballpark. Because nobody can do that forever. But Phil certainly deserves every accolade we could give him. And I totally agree with reaching out to the Reitz family and seeing what they think about it.
Okay, so we're gonna reach out to the Reitz family and then we're going to bring them back to council, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna see if we can find any of their descendants that we could reach out to. And obviously, if we can, we'll communicate with them. If not, we've tried and then we'll move forward.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
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 Okay, it sounds like we're good there. We move on to others. At the suggestion of Councilmember Beaton, I'm going to be calling on each member to see if there's any other comments. We'll start out with Mr. Cooper, do you have any other comments?
No, but I'd like to see that field be Dave Kleiber Field, or excuse me, Phil Kleiber Field instead of- It's not, you're not taking away from Reitz Park. You're still gonna call it Reitz Park, but the field, I don't think the Reitz family would care if you put name the field Kleiber Field. That's all I got.
Councilmember, Councilmember Beaton, you have anything else?
Uh, no, I just am hoping that in July, we can start meeting face-to-face. I think that would be really helpful. Do you, Mr. Taylor, do you have any feelings on that? Are we gonna be allowed to go forward and meet face-to-face?
Well, currently, we can, we can, for the executive order, you can have meetings with up to 50 people in a building, but you still have to maintain the social distancing. So, we've asked our facilities manager, Mark Hanson, to go up to the council chambers and figure out what's the maximum seating capacity of that, maintaining six-foot distance. We've also reached out to Ramsdale Theater to see if they're amenable to holding council meetings there where we can get maybe more people in there. So, we're looking at options.
Okay, thank you. That's it, let me-
Martin Pontiac?
Yeah, I just had a question for Jeff McCula. There's, I think there was some construction done on First Street, just going down to First Street Beach past Maple. And it looks like the road was patched up. Is there anything else that's gonna be done to that?
Yeah, we've got that added to our annual patch list and we are collecting quotes on doing that work right now.
Okay, 'cause I just drove down there and it seems, I mean, it's pretty bumpy. So, I didn't know what was going on. Okay, thank you.
I directed my staff to patch or put some gravel in that tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Councilmember-
The only thing I wanted to say was, again, about the long and short-term rentals, I think, I hope that you can come up with something that includes the long-term rentals because I think it's gonna look bad if you put a lot of time and energy into making the short-term rentals look great and great for the people that are here for a weekend and you forget about the actual residents of the city that are living in dilapidated houses. Like, not even, not even the blight, just having the owners that don't live here, the landlords, cleaning up their house. I mean, I still think that that needs to be included in there. That's it.
Mr. Councilmember Gobowski?
Yes, two things. I agree with Jermaine, we do have to put in long-term rental, we can't forget that. We have to remember that when we pass the ordinance. Also, Jeff, I'd like to ask you, at First Street Beach, when you come around by the lions and then you're coming south, there's that little, I don't know if it used to be a driveway, there's asphalt down there, but it's been cleared out and a lot of people are using that drive instead of the other drive that goes down. There's a Porta John right by it there. Are we gonna leave and keep going down there or be careful somebody gets stuck? Or are we gonna block that up?
Well, actually, that, that's an ancient driveway that's been buried for sand for, geez, for maybe 10, 20 years. And so, it got uncovered during one of our large, or it got partially uncovered during a large storm. And then the wind has eroded it back down. So, my intention is to actually remove that asphalt because it's not a safe passage.
Good, thank you. I'm done.
Mayor, I'm sorry, this is Beaton, I have one more thing and I really apologize for jumping in. The people on the north side, several of them, or a lot of them, have contacted me over the past couple of weeks about all the work that's being done here. First of all, I wanna tell you that most people are really pleased with some of the progress that's been made. The areas that are completed look outstanding. There is some concern, and Jeff, I just want you to make a note of this and Stan Taylor, there is some concern with some of the residents because of the heavy traffic on the local streets here where streets were bad. And some of this equipment has torn them up some more. They're concerned that they're not gonna be repaired. I do not know how to answer that because they're not currently in the plan. But I'm wondering how we're gonna address that complaint because I think it's coming forward some several residents to us and I don't know what the answer is.
This is Jeff McCula. Yeah, we're aware that, actually, what the residents have been asking the engineers and my staff are, is are those segments of the street gonna be upgraded as well? The short answer is that the work that needs to be done to those requires reconstruction and they have undersized utilities below them. Once we get completed with the actual construction and get gravel and base asphalt down, we can evaluate the damage caused by the construction traffic and we may be able to do kinda some wedging to smooth them out, which is just literally dragging some asphalt across it to shore them up for a short period of time. But that'd be more effective than just patching potholes. So, we're aware of it. We discussed it at our engineering meeting today and we'll be looking at it as the project comes to a close.
Thank you, Jeff. That's really, they appreciated the step up more than cold patching and they realize they can't totally be done, but, you know, that will, that will help a lot. So, thank you.
Right.
Mr. Samansky, Councilmember Samansky?
Nothing more at this time, thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Nothing further.
I have nothing with that. I will adjourn the meeting, thank you, everybody.
Can I say, can I say one more thing? Am I sounding? Okay, this is Rob Carson. I just wanna make clear that there is a long-term rental ordinance already in place in the city. And there's also a blight ordinance. So, when we began looking at putting together a short-term rental ordinance, it's not really about trying to capture long-term because we already have that. There's already, there's already a codified ordinance to handle that in a rental program. So, I think the discussion just needs to be a little bit larger than drafting a new ordinance, placing short-term rentals and zoning ordinance, whatever the method is chosen, to also enforcement. Because the ordinances are, for long-term are in place, the rental program's in place already. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have nothing, I just adjourn the meeting, everybody stay safe. Have a great evening and we'll have some, I guess we have some stormy weather coming. Be safe out there. Thank you, everyone. Good night.